Please rise for the pledge to the flag. Well, welcome. With lots of kids being honored comes a big following, which we love that. So, we're glad to have you here. Before we start the meeting, we have a lot of things going on. We have a lot of you being honored. But then, year end brings a lot of awards and recognitions, and so, we want to talk about that, too. I'll go first, and I just want to talk about year end testing. We want to give a big shout out to all the buildings that have been testing the last couple of weeks. As you all know, we're getting to the end, and they're in a full-out sprint to get all of this done. So, I know it's been going well, and I want to give a shout out to them. So, does anybody else have anything they want to enter? I know Brian will follow in the end, because there's lots. Yeah? Anybody?
No, you kind of took the words out of my mouth. I know it's been a sustained couple of weeks of focus on the testing, with maybe some fun things planned at the end, but thank you to all the students, parents, staff for pushing through.
I'll segue to testing. We had three perfect ACT scores.
Impressive.
Sure. So, CAMPIS is May 22nd, and the Kentucky cycle, the play from the fall, was nominated for seventeen CAMPIS, and so, we'll find out that night in a cool production how they did. At the Academy Awards?
It is like that.
Seventeen nominations.
Seventeen nominations.
And just toot the horn of We the People, won a national award, a unit award. So, great job to them. I think it was Unit Two that won, so bravo to them.
So, how many years have we been going to nationals?
I guess since 2002.
Okay.
I think with one or two exception.
That's right. That's right.
Yeah, we, this is a segment where we like to do bravos, and we recognize a lot of things. There's something will get left off the list, and so, I apologize for that. But just to share some of our recent celebrations across the fort, you're going to hear a little bit more about FCC LA in a special presentation in a minute. Our perfect ACTs, our governor scholars, we're going to recognize where a lot of you guys are in the room for that. I would be, I'd miss an opportunity if I didn't say happy Mother's Day to all the mothers here. We have, even though we're one day late, we're going to celebrate you all the whole month, anyway.
We need a month.
Yes. Griffin Sanders, outstanding school-based scholars for health sciences. We had some perfect scores and distinguished marks on KMEA coral assessments. Huge shout out for our high school community, and really, all those supporting students within the high school as we were recognized as the top in Northern Kentucky, the third in the state, the third in the metro area, and jumped up ninety-nine spots in U.S. News and Road Report to be considered the 263rd best high school in the country. It does. It really does. So, great work. Great work there. We had a very first Northern Kentucky representative at Johnson Elementary as they earned the distinction as a national green ribbon school. It'll be one of two schools in Kentucky that will represent us in Washington, D.C. We had two students who were semifinalists as presidential scholars. One is here tonight as a presidential scholar. Talk about that. Two students who are current juniors who will be recognized by the National Merit Program going into next year, either as commended or semifinalists. James Owen Taylor, second place in the region, will be competing states for the National Civics B. The middle school was rated as the top school in Northern Kentucky and number four by NISH as the top middle school in the area. Congrats to Ms. Casey Gessen Hughes as the Outstanding P-12 Clinical Leader of the Year for MKU. We're going to have some Hall of Fame announcements coming up. Anything to add to that before we?
That's committee report.
Committee report. All right. We'll hold off. Those of you guys who want to stay for another hour. Our middle school girls won the conference and track, I think is recently is. Was it Thursday? Last Thursday or Friday? And then, we are going to celebrate graduations and end-of-year ceremonies is our last day for students. I know you're sad, it's the 24th, but it's coming right away around final exams. And I have to share how cool the senior awards program was last week. It was really a special thing to celebrate the accomplishments of our students and the outpouring from the community. But I have to share a specific example that we may try to recognize again next year. There was a new scholarship that was offered by Chrissy and Chris Hyatt and within their family, and they called it the Fly Higher Scholarship. Really neat moment that I think is symbolic of how cool this community is. They originally were offering two $5,000 scholarships for seniors. And the questions were very motivational around what you aspire to be, who inspires you, how you start the day with thoughts about how to be kind to others and productive in your world. And so, they collected a whole variety of applicants, but the coolest thing was, while they were going to give two, the number of applicants and the quality of applications, they decided to give nine $5,000 scholarships this past year. And then, to recognize the other twenty-four applicants with $1,000 each for that scholarship as well. And the idea of it's always important to reach for something higher. So, just a neat thing that celebrates our kids, but also, I think it celebrates our community, and I think it's worth sharing as a bravo. What was the, I saw the number. What was the number of scholarships given that night?
More than 140,000, and that is only local scholarships. That doesn't include universities.
Not just community, regional.
Civic organizations, families. It's more than 140.
Very impressive.
I think we need a round of applause. Okay, Mr. Darnell, will you come up here? I know you're going to do FCC LA and the presidential, well, you're going to do all of this, aren't you?
All of them.
Okay.
I've got time on the mic, so I'm going to take advantage of.
No, just don't sing.
I would not sing. I wouldn't sing if you asked me to. So, to recognize our two students who are being recognized with FCC LA, we do have one who is a officer, but then, if they could both come up. So, we have Star Event State Champion Addison Eifert in sports nutrition. And then, we have Allet Brumal, who is the Kentucky State Vice President for Peer Education. I don't remember how many years in a row we've had a state officer from Highlands, but I feel like it's probably the most in the state, because every year, we're recognizing somebody for this. So, we have these two exceptional examples of students in our FCC LA program.
Okay, so, I'm the State Vice President of Peer Education. So, peer education is over all of our programs. There are eight peer education programs. They are basically education programs. One of Families First is one of them, which talks about different types of families and how we can learn about them. Another one is Stand Up, which talks about student advocacy. Student Body, which talks about nutrition, financial fitness, and just a bunch of different other things like that. So, my job is to push out things that you can do to be a part of those programs and to use them in your learning with your members, so.
So, at the state level, I competed in sports nutrition, which is an event that's all about taking a student athlete and pretty much developing a nutrition plan. And it works with one of the programs Allet mentioned, which is Student Body, which is all about teaching teenagers and students how to take charge of their health and nutrition and overall wellness.
And so, you worked with like a scholar athlete from Highlands?
Yes, I worked with our varsity pitcher, Katelyn Dixon, and I was a student.
Seems to be working.
So, funny story. I was a HEMAC teacher before I became a counselor, and I had a boy in my class. I know. I'm sorry, Family Consumer Science. It was so long ago. It was called HEMAC. And I had a boy that came and wanted to gain weight for football. So, I did what you did, did a whole meal thing for him, and we talked about good fats and bad fats. And the coach at that time came down to see me, and he said, "What did you give so-and-so?" And he said it was impressive, because when I was in high school, they told me to eat a loaf of Wonder Bread and a pound of butter every day. So, I said, "Well, you sit down. We'll talk about good fat and bad fat, because that's all bad fat." Yeah. He said, "Yeah." I said, "Let me guess. You had a lot right around the middle." Yeah, and he did. I love that you're doing real-world, real-world things like that and working for them. So, the other thing I want to talk about is FCC LA. Congratulations. That's a cool thing. The one thing about FCC LA is you all run it. So, it is huge. You are living and dying by the sword up there and running it. There's not an adult that's, you know, I mean, they're here, they're there to kind of, you know, help you along, but it's a great opportunity for you. So, congratulations.
Next, we have a U.S. Presidential Scholar. So, this year, an estimate for the number of seniors across the United States is somewhere between 3.8 and 3.9 million people. And that's including all the different types of schools. That's just not public schools. And so, to be identified for this, students go through an application process. It's identified with test scores. And so, there are 161 U.S. Presidential Scholars. And we are pleased that Owen Borden is our U.S. Presidential Scholar, one of 161 out of 3.8-ish million seniors around the United States. Also, Owen was, he just finished his term as a advisory member on the Kentucky Commissioner of Education Student Advisory Panel as well. So, just throwing that in, that he also served on that capacity. So, you can go ahead and come up. He's also a member of the infamous Unit Two.
There you go.
About We the People and the competition.
I just want to say real quick, because one of the biggest parts of the United States Presidential Scholars thing and the whole application process, Mr. Darnell talked about it being test score-based, and that's for the initial nomination. But then, one of the biggest parts is actually writing about a teacher that's been so impactful in your career. And I want to give a little shout out to the one teacher that I wrote about, who is Mrs. Nina Kearns, who is the, if you don't know her, she is the high school psychology teacher. But she also teaches AP Research, and that's the class that I had with her. And I will talk anyone's ears off about AP Research, and it'd be my favorite class ever. And her mentorship throughout that entire process was so impactful. So, being able to write about that and then be recognized with this feels like it's also recognized her. So, thank you.
That is a big deal. Do you have any questions? Well, congratulations, and thank you for sharing with us about Mrs. Kearns. She is awesome.
Have you made a decision on college yet?
I have.
Come on, you knew that question.
So, I will be going to the Ohio State University with their STEM and Scholar Program, which is full everything.
Awesome.
Congratulations. Thank you.
Next, we have our composite scores of a 36. So, as you all come in, if you head into the pack, I think the banners are on order to recognize our most recent class of juniors. In their scores, we recognize composite of 36, but any student that gets a 30 or higher on any of the individual tests will have their name on a banner. I think last year, you would think there'd be, we had six total banners, because one of the areas was very well-received by the students, and we had lots to get a 30. So, our composites of 36 are Flynn Cook, Ben Gilkerson, and Oliver Martin.
Uh, let's see. I don't think there's too much to speak about. I mean. I mean, it's perfect test score. What can you say more about it? Others, like in terms of teachers, definitely helped with it. I'm watching about you, too. But overall, like with math, my math teacher so far this year.
Edra.
Definitely for English, I would say, very mature.
What grade, what grades are you guys?
I'm 11.
I'm 10.
I'm also 11.
I can only attribute this to eating dark chocolate instead of milk.
Well, that's easy.
Eight hours of sleep, you know. I'd also like to thank Ms. Taylor, who is my English teacher, and definitely a big help. She put aside time in her class to work on ACT prep, leading all the way up to the test. I don't think without that, I would, I don't think I would have gotten that score.
Well, that's awesome.
Good job.
Thank you.
Next is our Governor Schools recipients, and we'll recognize these in three different ways. GSP is the first one. GSP operates off of an importment calculator. They look at all of the different students around the state, and you're allotted spots. And so, for us, we're typically allotted eight spots, but this year, we are happy to announce that ten students got in from what should have been eight. So, I'm just going to call your first names, so if you don't mind to come up, since there are so many of you, we have Marshall, Lily, Felicity, Hannah, Chelsea, Kate, Sophia, Abigail, Natalie, and Oliver.
So, while the pictures are being taken, for GSP, these are all juniors, correct? That you guys apply? Okay. I don't want to hide around.
I know.
And since there are so many, I'm giving you a big bag of t-shirts. Okay, are we good? All right, now we can see your faces. So, have you guys found out your campuses yet?
No.
No? What are the auctions this year? Okay. I'm a little biased to the center campus. I taught there. Or center. So, you're going to be away from home. How do you feel about that? Well, I will tell you, having had lots of our kids go through this program, to a person, they'll come back and tell us, I know it sounds trite, but it's life-altering, because you're down there for five weeks with like people, living on a campus, and have your phone's all day texting and calling back home. You truly are getting a taste for five weeks about how it's going to be on a college campus. So, I'm very excited for you all, and I'm excited to hear about it when you come back. So, anywhere you go, it'll be great. So, congratulations.
You were going to get a t-shirt, but since there are so many, we have bags for all the Governor Schools, so.
So, we'll meet in the hallway after the rest of the Governor's Campus.
Yes.
Next is Governor School for the Arts. So, this year, we have eleven students that were accepted, and then, we have two that are alternates. So, GSA is a little different. It's three weeks on a college campus, and then, of the three weeks, it is at the University of Kentucky. So, our students who are for GSA, we have Liam Delaney in film and photography, Sophia Hamilton, film and photography, Brianna Horner, dance, and Coonheim Dance, Sylvie Martin, vocal music, Abigail McKinley, instrumental music, strings, Chase Possett, instrumental music, strings, Jenna Ritchie, film and photography, Hayden Rolf, film and photography, Aisley Street, dance, Addison Talents, drama. And then, our two alternates are Max Hamilton, film and photography, and Nora Shadwell, musical theater.
Oh, well, I'm not actually a dancer. I'm there for drama. I'm actually very clumsy. Tell me to do a pirouette, and I'll probably land on my face.
They weren't going to ask you to dance, so you're safe here. You want to turn around?
Yeah.
So, do you know which campus?
They're all.
They're all UK?
Yeah, they're two separate sessions.
Yeah. Okay, do you know your sessions yet? Okay. Well, I'm happy with UK. We've represented all our schools here, so I think you'll love UK, too. And again, it's just like the other thing. You get to do what you love for three weeks with other talented people. How cool is that? It is. It is. So, congratulations.
It's amongst the greatest honors that we have, and so, this is a really special representation. Our Governor Scholars that we previously represented are typically around a certain niche. You guys have a different kind of experience as well, where you get to apply your talents in unique ways around the arts. So, thank you for representing Highlands well. We're excited for your summer experience. Your stuff is in the bag as well.
Yeah.
One more. So, thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Congratulations.
Next, we have Governor School for Entrepreneurs. This is the most recent Governor School that has started. We have one person accepted, Nick Wilson, and then, we have two that are waitlisted, Penelope Cole and Bailey McDowell. And I will say that Nick is the third out of three in his family that has gone to a Governor's School. So, we are definitely excited that he will be going to GSE.
Oh, yes. So, I just did a video, and it kind of discussed my interest in entrepreneurship. And then, I discussed like all my experiences, and two people that have had a huge impact on me, which is Ms. Carter, because I've been taking the launch program, and she sparked my interest in the business class I'm taking this year. And then, also, my sister Katie, who is International Business Major of South Carolina.
Oh, she's UK, too. That's awesome.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. All right, go see Mr. Darnell.
Okay, we are here. We're filmed. With those students, she came out. I'm not going to talk a lot, because they're going to do a great job explaining this. This is our fifth-grade students. They did a service learning project that really kind of went with the theme for this year, where we were really trying to take our academics and content out into the community. So, I'm going to let them explain the rest, though. Okay?
Hi, I am Kaiser Ayman, and I am a fifth grader at Woodville Elementary School. Tonight, we are here to tell you about our service learning project called Empty Bowls, Empty Balloons.
Hello, my name is Olivia Hat, and I will be talking a little about our guest speaker and worker at the Henry Hosea House, Ms. Lauren Kavanaugh. Ms. Lauren Kavanaugh came to our school to speak to us and teach us all about food insecurity, the Hosea House, what they do to provide for the community.
Hello, my name is Violet Reed, and I'd like to go into a little deeper explanation about food insecurity, donating to the Hosea House, and what they do for the community. Food insecurity is when a person does not have money for food or access to a good meal. The Hosea House helps these people by giving them a hot meal. The Hosea House is also very good about food donations. They accept donations from everyone. Restaurants such as Arby's and Starbucks donate meals to the Hosea House. The Hosea House helps our community in many different ways. They give people in the community who are less fortunate a nice warm meal.
Hi, I'm Charlotte Eckley, and I'll be explaining how the fifth-grade students make clay bowls. In our class, Ms. Fryman, art teacher, taught us how to make clay bowls. First, we made them, then we fired them in the kiln. After the bowls had gotten fired, we glazed them. Students either used one or multiple colored glazes. After we glazed, we put them back into the kiln. Some bowls got broke, like mine, but most got hot glued and got fixed.
My name is Kalina. I will talk about how the teachers made bowls. First, they got, they got the pre-made bowls, then they painted and glazed them. Last is how the bowls went on display, and then sold in an auction. And that money was spun into the Henry Hosea House. That is how the bowls were made and sold.
Our whole fifth grade hosted a soup night fundraiser. That night, we sold grilled cheese, a choice of either tomato soup or chicken noodle soup, drinks for, and drinks for $4 per meal. All profits made from that night were donated to the Hosea House.
We had to collaborate with the lunchroom staff, because they had to stay longer and make more food. Plus, they had to come back to Woodville and serve food at the soup night. We also collaborated with the teachers, because the teachers glazed and painted bowls. All the students and teachers' bowls were on display at the soup night. One other thing at the soup, at our soup night was students could sign up to serve one evening at the Henry Hosea House.
I'd also like to talk to you about something we call blessing bags. Blessing bags are gallon-sized Ziploc bags filled with snacks like bananas, chips, granola bars, fruit snacks, etc. We had students, if you're ready through fifth grade, bring them food through these bags. Then, we laid all of these items down the fifth-grade hallway and put each of one item in the bag. When the students went to serve at the Hosea House, we laid all the bags on the table. So, if somebody didn't have time to sit down and eat, they could grab a bag. Or if they needed a meal for the next day, they could grab one. At the end of the night, they all have been taken. And all, we made 400 blessing bags.
I volunteered at the Henry Hosea House, and I will tell you about the process of serving the meals. First, the people there got a tray and got the main dish. Next, they got the two side dishes. Then, they got their desserts. Finally, they got a drink and sat down. Now, Charlotte will tell you about how appreciative they were to have meals.
When I volunteered at the Henry Hosea House, I noticed how appreciative everyone who came in was. I had served the main course, so I was able to talk to everyone who came in that night. Every person who came in was so kind. They said how nice it was for kids to volunteer. I was so glad to be able to make people's day. We also got to see how everyone took blessing bags. I could see on their faces just how appreciative they were to be able to have a good meal that night.
Hi, my name is Fiona Cooper, and I'm going to explain how our service learning project connects to our educational needs. Hi, my name is Fiona Cooper and I'm here to explain how our service learning project connects to our educational needs. By writing it on demand and using the three, five, 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 three method to help us with our on-demand. But before, we were given this prompt. And then we got, and then we got to work on our on-demand. As an example, my fifth grade teachers asked if I would please read my on-demand. Many children in the Northern Kentucky area experience food insecurities. Now, where the meal will come. We are focusing our attention on creating awareness and ways we can make a difference for these families. By having a guest come and explain what food insecurity is, having our soup night and making blessing bags. This is how, well, our guest worked with that. We have to have both time and with, it helps with the prepared meals. She taught us all about food insecurities and how food insecurities can happen. She also taught us how the Hosea House helps people with food, helps people with food insecurities by getting donations for people all over Northern Kentucky. Arby's, Starbucks, and Kroger, but they don't make donations with money, but with food. She also said that the Henry Hosea House doesn't only give out food, but basic needs like toothbrushes, toothpastes, clothes, shampoo, hats, diapers, etc. By having a guest speaker come and, and teach us what food insecurity is and how you can help really made me look at a few things differently. The soup night was with families and came to Woodville and got a bowl of soup, either tomato soup or chicken noodle soup. They also brought a cheese sandwich. The si, the soup night wasn't supposed to fill you up. We wanted to show that not everyone gets filled up after dinner in terms of sometimes soup and groceries that all people get for dinner. The intention of our, of our soup night was to develop empathy for food insecurities with a light, with a light dinner. At soup night, at the soup night, us fifth graders, fifth graders just ate our bowls we made in our class by using hand-boning techniques. The soup night was a big part of our service learning project because we raised $835 to give to the Hosea House. It also gave us a taste of what some people were going through. We also made best blessing bags to give out to people to visit the Henry Hosea House. The blessing bags included a joke on the front and inside the blessing bags were food snacks, granola bars, bananas, cookies, and goldfish, and similar items. The first round of bu, blessing bags included 120 blessing bags and all 120 of them were passed out. The best part about passing out 120 best blessing bags was knowing we put a smile on 120 people's faces that day just by giving a small gesture. It wasn't just fifth grade students who donated, who donated. All of Woodville made donations of packaged goods to put in the blessing bags. So the fifth grade didn't just put a smile on people's faces Woodville did. This project was designed to help us understand that some people struggle with food insecurities at some point in their life. And I know it worked because before this project, I didn't know what food insecurities was. But now I have developed so much em, empathy for people who struggle having food insecurities. Henry Hosea House has really made an impact on people's lives, including mine.
Let's wrap up the presentation by sharing the check that we gave to Mrs. Lauren in the Hosea House. We, we were able to raise $835 for them. We were glad that they could use this money to serve people in the community. Any questions?
Well, I want to put a name to that suit. Did you even tell us your name? I know.
You and my man have some stuff. I want to know where you got that thing.
I know, I know.
Awesome job, what you guys.
There should be a picture on this last slide too.
That involves a large chat, a large chat.
So, it was, it was a special day.
Is this the first time the fifth grade has taken this project?
So I'll answer that question because I don't know if they know. Um, and it was just a Facebook memory recently of my daughter Campbell, who's graduating, when she was in kindergarten. There's a picture of her holding a bowl. So we started this project years ago and it's evolved over the years. We've donated to a preschool food bank. One year, we partnered with kindergarten and fifth grade together doing it, which was when Campbell was there. Um, that year, we had pre-made bowls and then when Mrs. Fryman came on the scene, our, our teacher, she's like, why are we doing pre-made bowls? These kids can make their own bowls. I'm like, okay, well, whatever you want to do. And so she started having them make their own bowls. Teachers are still glazing pre-made bowls because that's what we need, um, but they made their own bowls. So over the course of, you know, however many years that is, five to 18, 13 years, we've been trying to do this. COVID kind of shut us down for a little bit, um, but we finally brought it back again this year. And, um, Mrs. Barlow had a great idea to have us go down and serve at the Henry Hosea House. And that was a new addition we had never done before. I was a little skeptical about it and she said, let's try it. I'm like, okay, we'll try it. I've, you know, been around a lot, I can try new things. And sure enough, we went down there and the kids loved it, we loved it. I had some tears in my eyes watching them serve and I said, next year, we just need to hit the redo button. That was great that she decided to do that, so.
That's great.
That's kind of, just a little bit of history of it.
Did, did, do I see that you brought some bowls?
Yeah. Each of you, if you brought yours, take yours. If not, should someone show Mrs. Turner's, her bowl, because it was the best.
Let's see your bowls. Very nice.
It's not your mother? Wow, I really, I know. I liked what Fiona said and some of you guys said too about empathy. What did you learn about, like, did you know that word before? And, and what, she's like, of course. But do you know even more about it now, um, after what you guys experienced making the bowls, raising the money, serving?
So in, in a lot of on-demand settings, you would, you would do that in, in one sitting? Was, was this one that you got to do as a process or did you do that in one sitting? You feel like you fully understand it, maybe being able to, uh, experience it in real life and in person other than just kind of reading about something or, yeah.
Yeah, the fact that it was in, like, the Hosea House was in Newport, which is literally less than 10 minutes away. So that was a good lesson for all of us to remember.
Is it unusual that they would let children come down and, and serve?
There's an age.
They have a lot of, they have like high school and college groups that do it. They have the regulars. So they actually called off some of the regulars so that we could get that experience for three nights. But, um, I, a couple, Mr. Lindbrady, Lindbrady, he does it a lot. And so he was the one worried at first. Um, just because, you know, it's a lot to stand there for an hour and a half. Um, but they were great and all the patrons were very, you know, appreciative of them being here. And some of their parents, not ready to go too. So each of us took a different night to go and then some of their parents came with them, so. I really like, Ms. Barlow, that you were willing to take that chance. Because there could be a lot of questions and it could be some challenging things, but that they went in and had a.
Well, you have to keep doing service during middle school, so if you get kind of jammed by this and this is how you want to do, you know, what you want to do, it's very cool. Well, I'm impressed.
Yeah.
And I'm impressed teachers. There were so many layers to this. I love that too.
And all the.
So many, you know, and, and all the things that are connected to each other, so. Good job.
They didn't mention they wrote a book as well.
Oh, that's crazy.
Uh, our intermediate grades have book study. So, but in the, in the story, the main theme is humbleness and, um, the character experience is wonderful, etc. Just like birthday, so there was even.
That's cool.
Yeah, tying the educational piece all the way in with all of it was, you guys did awesome, very good.
Well, thank you.
Good job.
Well, and he said for reward, that there is a reward. I'm gonna hand him, Ms. Barlow, where you guys give out their labels. Thank you. So thank you.
Hey, will you guys sign up and find out if their parents can picture?
Yes.
Oh, yes, yes. It didn't happen, I'm gonna.
Well, we will start the meeting. So those of you who came and I know they're fifth graders, so they'll probably want to go to bed sooner than we will get out of here, so, um, thank you for coming. All right, are we good? Okay. Jerry, are you first, our presentation? We don't have a community forum, so.
I just want to make sure.
Yes.
I didn't want to presume. So we'll, we'll go through these. We do have a number of items to get through and we'll go through them as quickly as we can. In terms of guaranteed energy savings contracts, we are still working on retrocommissioning at all the schools. Uh, that's CMTA and Comfort Systems. Uh, CMTA did send in a pay application, uh, that really covers the last two months of work they did because it's, they're really just paying Comfort Systems and their staff, so they're basically paying, you know, two or three people. Uh, they're not paying large contractors at this point. So they may not send one every month. So, uh, we do have a pay application for you to consider unless you've got questions.
Well, I know this has been moving on smoothly.
Certainly, yes, certainly smoothly.
Yeah.
The pay right now is just the, what exactly is it? What, what are they doing right now? Just the, just the monitoring of everything and trying to finish up the.
They're, they, they held back receiving compensation for some of their time.
Yeah.
Um, because they want to make sure that they're not paid out until everything is done. So they've been kind of holding back their payments and, you know, in proportion to the work that's left. They just felt that's the right thing to do. They are not onsite every day, but they are communicating every day with Comfort Systems. They do have, uh, people, particularly one person onsite pretty much every day.
Well, we've been happy with their work, so.
Yes.
It's nice that they were waiting for some results.
Yeah.
Those people were, um, asking for that, so.
So this is, uh, pay app number 13, which as I said, uh, really covers the last two months of work uh, for the amount of $82,979.39.
Okay. I need a motion for the approval of pay application number 13 to CMTA Incorporated for the amount of $82,979.39 for the guaranteed energy savings contract program. I'll make a motion for pay application 13. Second?
I'll second.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Okay. All right.
Next up is the athletic complex of Tower Park. We're gonna speak specifically tonight on phase one, which is the portion of the work that is relocating the road. Uh, Sergeant Avenue has been relocated. There is, uh, they have not started, Riddler has not started the process of removing the existing or the original Sergeant Avenue section. Uh, they're allowing some community, community members that use our gravel parking lots there. They're allowing them to use them as long as they possibly can. So those, they've been kind of coordinating with those families. It's maybe four or five people, but they're trying to be respectful of them as, as long as we possibly can. Uh, that may only last another few weeks because we've been working on that coordination and on the coordination of the start of the next phase, which is the, the reworking of Army Reserve Road where they have to drop some of the elevation and where they're going to, uh, add the sidewalks that connect Sergeant Avenue neighborhood all the way around to the park. And to do that, they are going to be, uh, starting to impact some of our, well, to significantly impact some of our property. That phase is gonna start on May 20th. We've been working with, um, representatives from the athletic department as well as our soccer partners to make sure that the work we're gonna do, uh, does not impact them or that we have alternate plans in place for them. Because on the 20th, we, prior to the 20th, we have to take, uh, out the electrical service for the lights. So, uh, we're, we're at the point where, you know, anything we have scheduled out there usually is over before dark at this point. So we're not too concerned about that. Um, but we also, on the 20th, have to shut down the water. So the restroom building will effectively, even though power will be on the restroom building, water will not be. So we're gonna put some portable restrooms there for, uh, the rest of the month. Uh, the reason for that is Riddler is going to take out that existing retaining wall, some sections of the track, and start the work on building the retaining wall they have to build as part of phase one to hold the hillside up for the work there, for trying to renew Army Reserve. So, um, we, Joe Hayes and I have been coordinating this with Riddler and Duke, getting everybody involved um, over the last couple of weeks. So, um, Riddler is ready to move on to this next piece of the puzzle. Uh, and then in addition, as you all know, um, bidding for phase two closes later this week. And we'll see the results of those bids and where we go next. We do have two pay applications tonight, but first, any questions?
Just very brief adds to that project update. Um, and Jerry said this, we, we will open our bids on Wednesday, uh, for this round. Uh, there is, uh, a hope that, um, a week from today, we may have a, a special meeting to consider recommendations, uh, for those bids. It'll give us a little time to, to do some analysis and, and provide a really good recommendation for, for phase two of the project, which is the, the part that, uh, most people get excited about, um, uh, when, when you look at that piece. This phase one is really the preparation. Um, also in the consent agenda this evening, uh, is, is a memorandum of agreement um, for an amendment to our original one with the city. Um, and this is, um, to, to basically, um, clarify and make sure that it's really clear that the, the $5 million grant that was provided through the legislature will work through the city uh, in, in collaboration with them. And then, um, at that special meeting, uh, we'll also have, um, prepared, and I'm very confident we're doing some fin, finishing touches. The, the other item we'll have is, um, uh, an agreement with Arthur Sensi for, for their contributions, so.
Any other questions, comments? We have two pay applications from Riddler tonight. Pay application number one, they missed our deadline for getting it in last month by a few days. So we told them they had to wait till this month, um, and then they made sure they didn't miss the deadline.
Yeah, I don't have to do it either.
So, um, pay application number one is in the amount of one hundred forty-nine dollars, we're at forty-three dollars and eighty-eight cents.
Okay, questions or anything? All right, I need a motion for approval of pay application number one to Riggler Blacktop Incorporated in the amount of one hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars, three hu- one hundred and forty-nine, three hundred and four, three hundred and four thousand dollars and eighty-eight cents for the Highlands Athletic Complex at Tower Park, renovation.
I'll make a motion.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Okay.
And I will say it's really hard to read, um, place value.
Yeah, I don't, I don't write checks that big very often, so.
The one, one time a year I, I'm tasked with that is very difficult.
Thank you for giving me.
Pay application number two is for one hundred thousand six hundred nineteen dollars and seventy-three cents.
Okay, questions about this one? All right, I need a motion for the approval of pay application number two to Riggler Blacktop Incorporated in the amount of one hundred six hundred nineteen thousand seventy-three cents for the Highlands Athletic Complex at Tower Park renovation. Did I say that correctly?
I don't think so.
Oh, wow. One hundred thousand, one hundred thousand six nineteen, six hundred nineteen and seventy-three cents.
Yes.
I know.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you.
I get tripped up when they, when I start reading seven-figure ones.
I know, I know, so if you could bring smaller ones, we'd appreciate it.
Lots of them, I didn't.
Yes. Well, I'm, I'm excited about this, it's been, um, a long, we've been talking about this for a while, and it's a lot of work, so.
And we're really just.
I know.
So, the, the next item, uh, if you recall, a couple of months ago, we brought, uh, the request for proposal for custodial supplies. We had a lot of companies, uh, return them. Uh, they were due back shortly after, or shortly before the April meeting, but because there were so many responses, we needed to take extra time to go through them all and make sure that, uh, we had clarified any questions we may have, and that we were recommending, um, the lowest bidder, uh, to you. So, we went through, it's a very large spreadsheet, uh, and we've highlighted the lowest best bid in each spot. It's spread in general over about six companies. There's a couple that had one or two items, but, you know, um, I've always believed that even if a company, uh, is a little bit on a few items, we should honor that and purchase from them unless they give us a reason not to, to kind of have a bidding process.
So, we can, like, line item this by, it's not a all or nothing?
Correct, it's, it's by line item, so.
Okay.
Uh, we will get the lowest bidder for, uh.
Toilet.
One type of toilet paper, we actually use two in the district. Um, so, we line item each one, and they provide bids. And same thing with, you know, we use three different, you know, color or size of can liners, so there's all individual line items.
That sounds like a lot of fun.
What kind of increases it looked like versus like years past?
I didn't think it was too bad, I know we experienced some increases over the next, um, and, and honestly, I think our total amount, when we looked at what we expect to buy, the total amount is down, but that's because we took off products that we used specifically for COVID.
Yeah.
So, we felt at that point, some, some of those things we could take off, so a projection of those particular items that we might use, so looking at the total value of it, it's probably lower, but I felt like we're, we're a few percent, percentage points in terms of individual product price increase. And most of these did include, we, we requested a letter that if they, with some verbiage, that if they thought they might have price increases throughout the year, they needed to tell us upfront that, that, you know, they would follow our process for proving their price increase protection on us, they couldn't just decide to raise the price, their price to get the product to go up. So.
All right.
Good.
Any others?
We feel good about it.
Okay, so I need a motion for the approval of the RFP for custodial supplies. I'll make a motion, second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
I don't think I'm done yet.
No, they have a cleaning.
As we, as we talked last week, um, throughout the spring, uh, late winter and spring, we did some, um, trial runs using First Green Building Services to clean up Woodville and Johnson, uh, first Woodville and then Johnson. We went that route because we were having a difficult time, um, maintaining personnel in those buildings. The results were very good. I know when I walk through the building, I feel like they're doing a very nice job of maintaining it, not the seats, the staff we had there before, but when you're constantly under manned, you're constantly short, or people are out ill, or people are out injured, it's tough to maintain everything. And one of the benefits of, remember we have a fir- with First Green, is that we had three people cleaning for five hours in each building every night. So, every night, day, we're able to contribute fifteen man-hours in each building, which was difficult for us to replicate, um, given the circumstances.
And also.
Effort.
It, like, cost-wise, we're looking at pretty much the same, but we're, we're having guaranteed.
Yes.
Like, work done that we know will happen regardless of health or injury or anything like that.
And I, I know the building supervisors are happy because they don't have to worry about suddenly somebody calling in sick, and now can I find this up, do we have this up? What do we do, now I'm gonna stay over an extra four hours, that kind of thing, so, um, I think we've gotten good results, and, uh, as we talked last week, it's, uh, our recommendation that we signed the contract with them to provide those services to those two buildings for next school year. And they held the cost.
Well, and it helped the other buildings too, as we were able to move the people from Johnson, yeah, from Johnson and Woodville. Over to other buildings, so.
That's good.
I would say this is the longest we have been fully staffed in probably over three years. Yes.
That's good, that's really good.
So, it, and it, and it is having beneficial results, um, in the other buildings as well, for that reason.
And we haven't had problems on, uh, after-hours events going, things going on, practices and all that either, right? It's.
No, um, the administration at Johnson and, and some very good procedures in place, they were communicated to all those users. Um, there's been good communication between our staff and the staff from First Green, um, in terms of special events, you know, uh, May is, they're just everywhere all the time. Um, and there's, there had been some times where they've allowed us to wait until eight o'clock to come in, because we haven't been going until seven.
Yeah.
Uh, from that respect, it's been good.
Well, it's worth it.
We, we feel good about the results and the relationship and, you know, uh, the prospects for next school year in those two buildings.
We, we will, uh, utilize their services to some, to some degree in the summer as well, that was the other unanswered question, and, and so we're finalizing, basically, what, what results in a, in an extension into our summer work as well, so I think we have a, a really strong plan for that.
Great. Okay, any other questions? Right, I need a motion for the approval to authorize the superintendent to enter into a cleaning services agreement with First Green Building Services at Johnson Elementary for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
I'll make a motion.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay. And then the Woodville one?
Yes.
I need a second motion for the approval to authorize the superintendent to enter into a cleaning services agreement with the First Green Building Services at Woodville Elementary for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. I'll make a motion, second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye, opposed? Okay. All right.
All right.
Thanks, thank you very much. All right. All right, Keith, are you next?
All right, good evening, um, tonight, I'm here to, talking about several things, but the first thing on, uh, the doc to me, uh, the different diagnostics that have gone throughout, throughout the year. Uh, so, I've come up here several times throughout the year, uh, talking about, you know, phase one, two, three, and we are finally at our final phase, which is phase four, which is the culminating part of our comprehensive district improvement plan. Uh, each of our schools do a comprehensive school improvement plan, they lead their school council, teachers, multiple stakeholder, stakeholders through that improvement planning process throughout the year. Um, and we take those plans, compile them all together to create the district improvement plan, and that's what I'm here to share with you tonight. Uh, it all starts well, each school and district does a needs assessment, we look at various pieces of information and data to create that needs assessment, everything from data analysis from our KSA, so that would have been the KSA that we just concluded. We use the twenty, spring of twenty-three KSA data helped create this district improvement plan, so we're always kind of doing a reflect back to help create the plan moving forward. And so, the goals and objectives that you're gonna see up here on the board result in the KSA data results that we have from the spring of twenty-three. Uh, so we're constantly in this state of reflection. Uh, so we do a review of twenty-three, twenty-four, we constantly analyzing, how are we doing? Um, what is presently happening, what resources do we have with human and digital and, uh, through our curriculum review process? What are all the resources that we have, uh, to help create this needs assessment? Identify priority areas, and then what are the things that we're doing well that we need to keep and maintain? Conversely, what are some things that we need to change and modify and leverage to our strengths? And so, doing that needs assessment process allows us to then create a comprehensive district improvement plan. And so, what it provided for, every school improvement plan, every district improvement plan has the same components. And so, the anatomy of a district improvement plan, um, is multifaceted, it starts off with just a goal. The goal is a longer-term view, it's a three-to-five-year goal that you set out using the numbers from the results of the state assessment. From that, you then create a year-long objective, uh, so my special education teachers can kind of understand, you break it down, start from large, you break it down to smaller. And so, you create an annual objective utilizing the data, then you go to a strategy, activities, how are we gonna measure whether that activity is, um, being effective? We're gonna progress, monitor it, our leadership team does a great job of meeting at month, monthly leadership meetings to talk about what are the gains that we're making, what improvements are we, uh, doing? That's also happening in our safety council meetings. And then if, when funding is necessary to support these initiatives, how is that going to take place? So, the anatomy of a district improvement plan is very similar to a school improvement plan, which our principals did, um, back in the summer. And so, what I want to share with you tonight are the components of the district improvement plan, specifically the goals. I'm not gonna get into each of the components, um, really kind of say higher level. And so, the state does a nice job of laying out, um, what goals we need to have. And so, every district improvement plan has the components. And so, you see that we have a reading and math goal, and if you remember through, when I presented on the state assessment, they kind of changed some of the language, where we have index scores, we have status scores, we have indicator scores, we had colors. And so, what I put together is able to combine all of those index numbers, uh, to create these numbers, that's where I've come up with this. And so, what I've stated is that we will go from a seventy-nine point three to an eighty-five point zero by twenty-twenty-eight. And so, that's that combined reading and math indicator score, um, that's the goal that we're shooting to have. Those indicator scores, again, are from the index scores from the individual content areas. So, you combine those, that's how we get that indicator score. Um, if you remember, then we combined science, social studies, and writing, and the numbers that I have there from seventy-three, seventy point three to seventy-six. And we're talking about gap, now, gap is a little bit different. You don't make a five-year gap goal, because you don't know where your gaps are going to be. That's the one improvement plan goal, where it's a, you just create an objective, and then your, um, strategies, activities, progress monitoring, et cetera. And so, where our gap presently lies is how can we look to reduce that gap between our students with a disability and our students without a disability? And so, looking to kind of shrink that gap, um, that is our goal. Uh, specifically at our middle schools, where we're looking to shrink that goal, where we have largest number and population of students that are assessed, not so much where we have large, none of our students with a disability, but the largest number of students that take an assessment, assess in grade six, seven, and eight. And so, we're looking to shrink that gap, um, that's what we're looking to work toward. English learner progress, I put it in A here, because you have to have a set, set of thirty students assessed in any one building. Um, we do not meet that criteria, so, and we have more than students that, more than thirty students that have that EL, um, designation, however, not in the assessed areas, uh, at those grade levels, so, uh, we don't have a goal for that. Our quality of school climate and safety survey, again, we're looking at two areas, quality of school climate and then safety. There's two different subsets within that, you combine, and I'm looking to go from seventy-two to seventy-nine. These next two goals are specific for our high school, we're looking for post-secondary readiness, looking to stay above one hundred, I think we're at a one hundred and four, Mr. Donnell. So, looking to remain over one hundred for our post-secondary readiness, there's lots of measures that can get us to post-secondary readiness, uh, whether it be CTE pathway completers, ACT readiness. And then, um, the last goal that we're looking to do is can, uh, our four and five-year graduation cohort go from a ninety-eight point five, uh, to get to a ninety-nine percent, is what we're looking to do for graduation. So, all of those components, those are our goals, again, that's our district goals. Each school has created their own school, uh, comprehensive school improvement plan, and so my ask of you tonight is to approve our district improvement plan for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
Okay, questions? There's a lot there.
If you'll give them out. I would say it's all the work, you know, I really, uh, just want to applaud our teachers and our, uh, building leaders for creating the school improvement plan, it really makes the district improvement plan, um, go pretty seamless, so you feed information from there, uh, to create that plan. So, I really want to thank our building principals for the work that they did on their school, uh, improvement plan, so, thank you.
All right, if there aren't any other questions, I need a motion for the approval of the CDEP for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
I'll make a motion.
Second?
I'll second.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Okay.
Okay, the next thing I want to talk to you about, um, we just shared the district improvement plan, that only happens, and it happens to high fidelity when we are in school. But unfortunately, as a part of this process is, uh, is a part of these diagnosis, diagnostics, diagnostics? Diagnostics? Diagnostics?
Yeah, yeah. A plus.
So, yeah, yeah, so, as a part of these, uh, steps that we have to take, uh, through, we have to do a continuation of learning plan. And what that resolves is, we need to have a plan, um, should we ever need to go into a situation where we have to have non-traditional instruction. And so, there are ten assurances that I'm asking you to sign off, similarly how earlier in the year I asked you to sign off on funding assurances. Uh, so these are assurances that should we ever be placed in NTI, non-traditional instruction, we can continue and move forward with the instructional learning that would take place. And this is a bulleted list, just saying that we have our teachers, um, we have to have non, uh, NTI non-instruct, non-person instruction days, we can do that, uh, via our digital environment. Um, students will get credit for NTI days, it won't be counted against them in their attendance rule. Um, also that we just have partnerships established in order for us to pull off NTI. I will say, when we did have to go this route, uh, back in twenty-twenty, uh, our technology team headed by Mr. Johnson, did a great job of allowing us to pull this off, I would say better than any district in the state. And so, uh, feel like we have a good plan in place, should we have to, for some reason, not be able to go to school. Um, our staff is well-equipped, our building leaders are equipped, our technology is equipped to be able to move forward with an NTI, uh, day, all that being said, I hope it never happens, so.
Yeah, I'm not gonna vote for those.
Yep, no, you have to vote on it, you have to vote that we have a plan, you don't, or you're not voting that we are.
I know, we just have a better plan, so we have an NTI.
Well, the state.
I'm asking you tonight to approve the idea of a plan, not necessarily moving forward with, ever, NTI.
We wouldn't know.
We never have a day, so we have to have one every once.
And, and again, for clarity, this, this by no stretch, um, says that we would ever have an, any idea. It just says, if something ever happened where you would call it that, you promised to do X, Y, and Z.
Yeah.
Or.
Right.
Well, this is just assurance of what that even means if, if we were to, to declare it, so. So, the state allows for NTI days, um, I have no intention of using them. If it ever was, we'd have to do these things.
Right, and we've had this planned for years, so, and we didn't use it to. Okay, I need a motion for the approval of the twenty-four, twenty-five continuation of learning NTI plan. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. All right. You next, this next section?
Uh, yes, ma'am. So, um, as you are, are aware, we, we have contracted services for the last three years, uh, with Living Media, and actually, three years prior to that, uh, to do some of our public relations work. Media and actually three years prior to that to do some of our public relations work. I did a little bit of exploration in addition to public relations work, which, which includes social media, video development, strategy preparation, a variety of photography, content development, project management, and then crisis communication should that ever need to occur. We have also had separate contracts for traditions, which is our biannual production that goes out to the entire community and some outside of the community and our calendar. I pursued this past year the question around, do we need to have RFPs for, for these services? And given that there's a specialty internally and we've had very few submissions for bids in the past, I was, I was informed we could go into more specific negotiations with the company that we're, we're happy to work with and do it year by year so that we reevaluate on an annual basis. So what I have attached in, in this agenda, and you guys have seen this, is the proposal from Living Media. We have shared this in some previous meetings. In this proposal, we actually combine traditions and calendar services with public relations. So it's, it's one contract as opposed to three separate entities proposing or working toward it. The difference is there's a, there is a small increase from three years ago of three thousand dollars, increases by that amount. And then we have, where traditions was twenty-six thousand-ish, that also included the printing. This contract includes a five thousand dollar in premium for the development of traditions and then we'll work collaboratively to do the printing costs as a group. And it also encompasses the calendar as well. So ultimately, it's a minimal increase from, from what our price was three years ago. We've, it's very possible we'll actually save money once we do printing, but it's, but printing costs have not gone down. So, so we're not banking on that. We're not counting on it at all. I will say that, that the social media work, the highlighting of, of the successes around the district, just the presence that Zach has, has provided this year, his positive interaction with our team, I've been super happy with, with Zach Wells and, and Living Media in general. And, and so I do recommend that we extend this for a year.
Yeah, because I saw recently, we were doing like a, a school each week, almost like a, kind of a deep dive into the schools on social media and stuff like that. So I think that was really cool.
He seems to be in everything. I mean, he's, he's a pretty awesome guy and does a good job.
With enthusiasm. He's excited.
Yes, like he wants to be there. Yeah. Okay. All right. If there aren't any other questions or comments, I need a motion for the approval to enter into a contract with Living Media LLC in the amount of fifty-eight thousand dollars for marking, for marketing and communication consulting and five thousand dollars for publication, design and editing fees to produce the school calendar and two issues of traditions for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
Second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, opposed? All right.
Good. Our, our next agenda item, I'm very excited to present this, this evening. Last year we did this in April. We wanted to be really purposeful this year and be able to respond to the results from the general assembly. Also was able to work with our, our salary committee, Ms. Foster, Ms. Meyer, to, to look at some of the, the different potential options. And then we reviewed some of the, the changes together as well. This is our year to look at the athletic portion of the extracurricular, our extracurricular service stipends. So that was reviewed. I am super excited about that based on the decisions of, of this board and the work within, within our, our schools on efficiencies and the continuing support of our community. We are recommending a salary schedule that increases the, the individual sales across our board by a minimum of four percent across the board. And, and to my recollection, last year was the, was the first year in about thirty years that we had a three percent increase. And, and I have not, I haven't done an extensive deep dive, but I can tell you for sure since the mid-eighties, we haven't had anything of, of this significant in a single year. So we feel, and Andy will be up here, he can vouch for us if we talk about, about budgets here in just a few minutes. We, we are in position that this recommendation will keep us definitely competitive in, in Northern Kentucky. But also we're in a position to make sure that, that we have some baseline for, for future raises as well. So it, it is not, this is I putting it all out there, but, but we feel comfortable that the recommendations we make put us in a, a spot where, where two percent raise is, is a great starting point going into next year as well. You never know what conditions provide around, but, but, but that was the decision-making approach that, that we took. So there are a few minor changes around the athletic stipends. There are some changes in summer enrichment. There are a few other modifications to, to address and create balances on the schedule as we saw opportunities to do it. But when you talk about, and, and I'm going to go back for a second because four percent is, is part of it, but that's in addition to our step increases. And so the real impact on, on salaries for, for the overwhelming majority of, of our staff is at least five to five and a half percent salary increase going into next year. So enthusiastically recommend it, excited about it and, and definitely open for, for any other questions you may have.
Questions or anything? We, Sarah and I are on the salary committee, and I want the teachers to know along, you know, with, with Brian and Andy, we're always looking for ways to, to be able to compensate our teachers. You know, when you have a budget that's about eighty-five percent, eighty-three percent that's, that's staff, you're constantly, you have to be efficient elsewhere, but you're the most important people to us. So, so we're excited. I got home and went through cells. I think that it'll be, they'll notice it, and you'll notice it in your checks next year, which we are excited about. So thanks for all your work.
I want to echo that as well. I'm, I'm very, oh, we, we celebrate the teachers all year long, but I think the best way we can celebrate them is by putting more money into their checks each, every, every other week. And so I appreciate all the work that the office staff did to let us, to, where we could see the sales, we could see the different numbers and really help us get to this point where we can make this recommendation. So I'm, I'm thankful for the work that everyone put into it.
You can bring up the eighty-three percent or whatever it is makes up. But one of the first training classes I was in, they're like, if you're over eighty, you need to, you need to, you know, you need to be worried and you need this. And it's like, hey, I think this needs to be number one priority and we need to make sure of where, where we need to be, so.
Well, our city supports us. I mean, the taxpayers here support us. I mean, they, they want us to have great schools and we have great schools because we have great people. So we want these people to stay.
It's important.
Anything else? Okay, then I need a motion for the approval of the salary schedule for twenty-four, twenty-five.
This is what everybody's going to want.
I know. Yeah.
You gotta do the salary.
In Houston? I don't know. Oh, no, Michael, Michael.
Second?
Yeah, Sarah.
I'll do the, I'll do the event.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Do we, motion, Sarah made the.
Julie.
I'd second and, so, I thought it, I sent it to her telepathic.
Okay.
In, in the theme of, of considering how we, we serve as a destination district, but that also that we make investments in, in our people for the long haul. Andy and I have, have, have done some research to, to come up with another unique benefit or at least to, to work as a pilot. And so we are also in a position to consider what we're calling a, a annual supplemental retirement match for all of our, all of our employees. So this is any employee within our district could be eligible for this benefit. And what it does is provide a match of the first five hundred dollars that any employee would put towards, towards a supplemental retirement account, such as a 403B deferred compensation account. This would be, we'll, we'll do a little bit more of an unveiling and, and roll this out and some, some education around it at the start of the year. But essentially, employees would be, would be matched the five hundred dollars in their first pay period of the year after which they serve. So it's a retention component, or if they retired in that year. And so we're working with our providers to, to work out those details and see what that looks like. But it is a, a good chance for particularly, for all of our employees, but particularly some of the employees that have come in and, and the, the most recent wave, where there have been changes to the pension, to, to make sure that people are, are considering their long-term financial health as well. So we think it's a, a creative way to, to, to offer something unique. We don't, we're, we're not aware of any local districts that are providing this benefit. There were a couple that have been mentioned across the state. They do it in, in a slightly different way. And it's one that if it's successful of its well, well-received, it can always be expanded upon. If it doesn't hit the right match, then, then we can always look at that in, in the future as well. But it is a, a unique and, and a pretty cool way to, to, to look at employee benefits. Love to take some questions here, if you have any questions?
I love the idea though, I mean, coming up with ways that we can differentiate ourselves for employees and, and, you know, in addition to what Sarah said about taking care of the salary, but also what else can we do? Yeah, and so this is a great idea. Like you said, try it, see how it works out, see what, how they, how they react to it. And if there's some other things we can do, we should do that too.
Yeah, no, I think it's a great idea.
Well, and to your point about getting started early, investing out, outside of the pension plan, I mean, that's when you really get your dollars back when you retire, so. Okay.
And it has tax deferments, so doing some education around that would be.
Yeah, I will. Yeah. Yeah. Okay, I need a motion for the approval of the annual supplemental retirement match of up to five hundred dollars.
I'll make a motion.
Second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay.
The, the largest budget implication here would be actually in next fiscal year as well, just to kind of point that. All right, it's budget time because we haven't had enough heavy topics on, on our today. As, as you all are aware, there are multiple cycles of, of our annual budget. We, we approved our draft budget this past January. The attachment that was provided to the, to, to the agenda and that you received in your packet shows you a summary and that's on the screen of, of some of the highlights of, of our more comprehensive budget. The columns that you're looking at really, we're looking at a working budget, which is the one we are currently operating in, in the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. The draft budget is the middle column that was approved in January. And then what we're going to be asking from you is approval of our tentative budget. Now, in our district, we, we, the tentative budget is, is, is very rarely changed. It will be slightly modified with any major changes that, that may occur going into September based on who gets hired, the experience levels, and any other changes that, that may arise from there. Couple of things that I'll highlight for you because there are differences between the, the draft and the tentative budget. On the top side is, is the revenue side. And you'll see that, that we have on the percentage components, our actuals that we're budgeting for property tax revenue have remained the same, but the percentage of our overall revenue has shifted a little bit. That's because our, our, our general assembly approved some increases in, in the SEEK allocation. And so as a result, we saw a little bit of movement of, of a reduction in the percentage that comes from local dollars of our, of our overall revenue compared to those of the state. Same with motor vehicle tax. The dollar amount stayed the same from the draft budget, but the percentage is going down slightly, not nearly what it needs to, but it is, it's still going down that way. You see that with utility tax. You do see an increase in the, in the amount that we've put in the budget for, for tuition. We've seen an increase in the number of tuition applications, plus we approved a, a slight increase in tuition rates. So this one represents a more realistic expectation based on, on current year. It's also about seventy-five thousand dollars over what was budgeted in, in last year's working budget. Couple of other things to highlight. You can see where the SEEK dollars compared to the draft budget. This is a more realistic SEEK allocation. It went from eight point seven million dollars to just over nine million dollars based on, on the general assembly. And another fairly large difference is more actuals as opposed to budgeting around interest income. So, so we have, we've done very well there, which is, which has helped us to, to budget more in our tentative budget. Down on the expense side, we, we've talked about the percentage of, of, of dollars that have gone to, to payroll and benefits. And so because we've been really, really thoughtful in terms of how we've addressed filling positions around making sure that we're, we're doing a deep analysis of, of as positions are filled, if, if they need to be filled over the last three years, we've actually seen some reduction in the total operating cost of the percentage of it. The other thing that's brought this down just a little bit is that we've, we've done more investing in resources, in, in core resources for our teachers, so.
Well, that's super great to see that going down to here to four percent. Like those things together are super exciting. And I know there's still a lot of work to make that happen, so thank you to Andy and you.
So you see, you see that the total dollar amount obviously for, for payroll and benefits is, is up about, it looks like about seven hundred thousand dollars compared to the prior year. So that's because of raises and, and so on, and, and years of experience. It's also budgets, the, the current staff, and we have very little turnover this year. And part because of the, the support I, I think that you're seeing in the district. But also, you know, Keith has spent a lot of money on textbooks.
The board has approved generous fees.
You should praise that.
Go Keith.
There has been a, a significant and, and very necessary investment in the resources that, that our teachers have to, to support instruction. This in particular is a, is a language arts year. And so making sure we have that intentional focus on literacy and, and updating those resources, that it will be really helpful. You see a little bit of, of, particularly buyback is down. Some of that is because we've had significantly fewer retirees. We had a bubble of, of, of large number for a couple of years in a row. The one big difference under computer lease, net of fees collected, you'll notice that that was zero last year in, in last year's working budget. It's because our, our fees were covered by Esser dollars. That was the last year for our Esser dollar payment of, of technology, of, of our lease. And so it's actually over the three hundred and forty-four thousand that we've budgeted, but that is what the general fund is, is providing after we take out some of the student fees that are assessed. There is some difference in, between payroll as well as building repairs and maintenance. So we've taken out the dollars that previously were supporting our custodial staff at Johnson in Woodville, and that's been placed into a contract services. So that's why you see some differences there. You'll also, you can see in, in this budget, the impact of our guaranteed energy savings contract. So there's a hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars bond payment towards the energy bond payment. But you can see that we're budgeting less than we spent last year in utilities and, and that is despite you have price increases in, in utility costs. So, so that shows that that is down. A couple of insurance that cost, the industry is, is asking people to, to budget anywhere from fifteen to twenty-five percent increases in insurance costs this year. Those who have already received your auto insurance, you know what we're talking about there. And then you can see the ELA adoption shows a, a bit of an increase from the previous year in instructional cost. Overall, there, there, it is a conservative budget in, in terms of, of. Overall, there it is a conservative budget in terms of real dollars. We're making some big moves in supporting teachers and staff, faculty and staff in payroll and benefits, but then also in resources. We feel like we can do it very, in a very fiscally sound way for the future. Andy, did I leave anything out that we should highlight?
No, that's right.
Open for questions. This was also reviewed, Ms. Kuhnheim and Ms. Meyer reviewed this as part of the Budget Committee, sort of had opportunities to ask additional questions. You're baffled.
And we talked about it working, did you have any questions?
No, we were everything last week.
Yeah, and I think you did a really good job explaining the highs and lows and where things changed or whatever, so.
And then even even with the SEEK increase, kind of the realized percentage increase, it's not quite, I think, maybe what helped my benefit in other districts, so we're able to make these increases even despite it not being maybe like a, I don't know, we didn't get 4% more from the state necessarily and are still able to make these moves.
I think that's an important point to bring up, that when when the when the General Assembly provides a 4% increase in SEEK, and they say that across the state, the real benefit that we realize in Fort Thomas is about a 1.5% increase in state dollars. So I think that's that's important for people to know. It doesn't, it's a distribution model, and we get a smaller chunk of the distribution on the per pupil. That being said, it was, the General Assembly did a nice job of moving in the right direction, and we hope that they continue those efforts in the right way because we have some ground to make up from 2008 and prior.
Anything else? Okay, I need a motion for the approval of the tentative budget for 2024-25.
I'll make a motion.
Second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
All right, this, the, this is the latest section, but I think I actually have one more. We are in collaboration with our insurance company, we were given an amount of bonding that is required of us to make sure that our treasurer, Mr. Remlinger, is appropriately bonded, as well as a couple folks within our office, so Lori Crawford and Mary Turner, I believe, as well. And so we're asking that you accept our recommendation to increase the bonding capacity for Andy Remlinger in the amount of $400,000, but not to increase it by $400,000, but to $400,000. Currently, it's $300,000.
Okay. Questions? Okay, I need a motion for the acceptance of the bond of treasurer Andrew Remlinger in the amount of $400,000. I'll make a motion. Second?
I'll second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
And this last item in the action section is around consideration of purchase of a school bus. This is a very much a proactive step. Is, as I've discussed with our board, we had an unfortunate accident with our school bus a little over a month ago. New children were involved, and it was not the fault of our bus driver. In fact, we have very clear video footage that was captured that showed another driver in the opposite direction entering our lane and taking out the wheel of the front of the bus. Unfortunately, where the bus was hit and how it proceeded, the insurance company has decided to total the bus. And so we expect a full replacement cost to be provided from the insurance company, but the last time we ordered a bus, it was a two-year process. And so we're asking the board to let us go ahead and initiate that process. We're giving dates that are significantly better in terms of turnaround of replacing that bus than it was at the time we last made this decision, maybe even a year from now as opposed to two years.
When was that, the last time?
We did.
When we give vehicles of any sort of any.
So we ordered in my first, at the end of my first year as superintendent here, and we will take possession of that bus this June.
Oh, my gosh.
So it was a long time. This one, we do expect it could be a year. So that's what this motion is, is to give approval to me to work with Mr. Stratton to start the process of purchasing a replacement bus.
Okay, questions? All right, I need a motion for the approval to authorize the superintendent in collaboration with the Director of Transportation to purchase a new 52-passenger school bus, and approval to adopt the participation resolution with KISTA.
So move.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Action items.
I know, now we're doing discussion.
Let's just talk.
I know. Okay, let's, yeah, let's discuss some things, Keith.
All right, so now that we have enacted our district and school improvement plan, now we're going to talk about the last phase of those diagnostics are to, all right, how are we going to train our folks up to ensure that we can carry out our plan moving forward? And so this last phase, the last diagnostic was done, our building leaders, and then in turn the district created a professional learning plan. So that's what I'd like to share with you tonight. How are we going to put these plans in place? And so that's what we're talking about. And so what I'd like to do is just kind of go through each plan quickly at each of the schools and kind of talk about some of the high levels. So if you remember last year, we moved to a model where we did like a cadre or workshop model where that's 12 hours of district leadership, excuse me, 12 hours of district professional learning, and I'll kind of hit on that at the end. But I wanted, what I wanted to highlight at Highlands is they partnered with Solution True, Solution Tree, and the PLC at Work, they're going to have a consultant come in for six hours of training with the Highlands High School staff to really carry forth that curriculum work that was started last year with social studies. Mr. Darnell and his org, he worked really hard and intently with their departments and their teams to talk about formative and summative assessment, talking about that to stage two and stage three curricular work. And so that's what they're going to do collaboratively together on the May 30th. And then throughout the course of the summer, those departments and teams will get together for the six additional hours of their professional development. And then the high school has a plan where they're going to allow six hours of flexible professional development. But it's all really going to be centered around that Solution Tree PLC at Work initiative that they have at Highlands. And so really applaud John and Jennifer for partnering with Solution Tree to carry forth those curricular initiatives, because that's really the crux of what that work is going to be. And excited about their plan and their schedule to be really intentional with their PLC times so those departments can get together and collaborate for the betterment of our students. So excited about their plan. Highlands Middle School, really again continuing the theme, on May the 29th, they're going to break up in departments at each of the levels and really make sure they include their special education department with their English department for the training that's happening with the new curriculum adoption that's taking place. So that's just one of the highlights. You may have heard, really want to applaud the middle school, their partnership with Open SAEAD and the region, they've really become regional leaders. We've had folks from Boone County, Kenton County, Campbell County to come and observe our students and our teachers implementing this curriculum. That's really been champion and spearheaded at Highlands Middle School. And so they're going to continue that year-two work and really specifically look at what are the assessments are they doing with that Open SAEAD curriculum? Specifically, how are we taking that hands-on learning approach and applying it to the assessments? They acknowledge they've got room to grow there, and so we're going to need this professional learning to take this learning forward. Our math department, we're doing math adoption. You thought that number was big this year with ELA? It's going to be, I'm just kidding, it's not going to be. With the math department, they're going to do their curricular work. And so they're going to team to look at their units of study, they're going to align their standards, really do more vertical planning, and the middle school's going to do that work on their day. So I look forward to that. Initially, they acknowledge that they have some work to do in our partnership with Renaissance and all of the elements that go within Renaissance. And so whether that's looking and analyzing data in the reports, or how can we do customized formative and summative assessments within Renaissance, that's part of the plan that will take place on their professional learning. Johnson Elementary, their plan, you're going to see a common theme here, K through 12, there's going to be time when our teachers are going to do that curricular work on our new ELA adoption, and so really bringing those consultants in, we're going to have that work done. Johnson is going to put a focus, just want to highlight for them, they purchased a new program or product, Bean Stack, I believe, and they're going to work on how can they take that reading that's within our new curriculum adoption, and then how can that be transferred to the love and passion of reading? And so bringing that work in, working with that program, that's how they're going to utilize that. They're also going to continue their pillars and pathways initiative and how we can work on that school-level implementation to carry that work forward. So that's just a highlight there from Johnson Elementary. Moyer, talking to Peter, sorry, don't spend some time talking to Pete. You know, Peter, he felt like it was really important on his team and his time to get his group together in August, after he's had some time with new assistant principal to Cara and Cara, to get together and say, look, how are we going to make and personalize our professional learning to make Team Moyer the best it can be? And so that's kind of a highlight for the Moyer professional development plan. Obviously, they're part of all things Amplify and the curriculum adoption that we're doing. But really, the highlight from Moyer is going to be that Leadership Day that Pete and Cara are going to put together to really create that team-building unity and really kind of get their team off to the next step. And then lastly, Woodpills Professional Development Plan, a highlight there, they, John and Liz have done a great job this year, their teachers partnering with the co-op, really focusing on those tier-one behavior interventions and behavior strategies. And so really, what does great classroom management look like for all students? And so they're going to spend an entire day looking at the behavior strategies and how they can just do great classroom management, and not just management, but how can they really put our students in a position where they can be leaders in the classroom? And so really working with our students who have the most significant amount of need, leaning on those experts from the co-op, and how we can transfer some of those strategies and skills in their in their classroom. And so I applaud John and Liz for making that connection, setting that partnership up. I really think all of our teachers and students will benefit from that, not just our special needs population. And then lastly, I mentioned this at the beginning, but our cadre workshop model, it is underway, well underway, or I won't say COVID, that doesn't sound right, but teachers are making their selections. That started last week. We are at about 65% of our entire staff have made their selection, and I really love the diversity that's across all of our selections. We've got everything from our letters training, which is our students to be helped with reading, to AI, to backward design and mapping and lessing design, to advanced placement. We kind of really have the whole gamut of options for students, for teachers. And so we're going to continue to fill those up. Selections for that continue through this Friday. So principals, please remind your folks to make their selections, but really excited about the diversity of the workshops and the cadres that we have, and that it really is playing out again this year, just as it did last year in terms of really giving teachers maximum choice and options in their professional growth and development. So so far, so good. Questions?
I just say thank you for that work, because when we talk about retention and how you retain staff, I think you can overlook something like professional learning and trusting them to be professionals and make some choices around their needs is a big piece of that. And it's way more difficult to execute and plan and carry out than just one size fits all, so thank you to all the people who've been a part of that.
Agreed, yeah, agreed. And my other thing I want to talk about is I know you've been really busy aligning curriculum too, so that was one of the things, when Brian was hired, we knew the need was there. So I know you've been running and gunning, and, you know, I applaud that, which also kind of pushes this as well.
Yeah, if anything, that's been the struggle I've just had internally, is like really fighting that balance between helping to grow professionally versus just what is PLC timing. So really kind of striking that balance. And so those are conversations we've had with department heads, and so I feel like we're in a good place, and, you know, I wish there was more time, but there's not. Time always wins, but I feel like we're utilizing it to the best that we can.
Doing a good job.
Yeah, good work.
Okay. Star data?
So as a result of all of that work that our teachers are doing, you know, there's multiple measures or multiple areas of where we can help determine student growth, but one of them that we use, or one point of measurement that we'll use, is our STAR assessment. So just as a reminder, we give the STAR assessment three times throughout the year, once in the fall, once in the winter, and once in the spring. The numbers that we really care, I won't say we care about, we care about all of them, obviously, but the one that really kind of shows the dividends and the fruits of our labor and the work that we've done all year long is that STAR spring score, right? The fall, you know, you've got summer slide and kind of that summer regression, we take that early August, early or late August, early September. And so that is certainly a measure, but it's more of a measure of the stickiness of the year before. That December measure, that's really kind of a formative assessment. Again, we look at it, we crunch those numbers, but the spring assessment is really the one that says, all right, you know, on this data point, at this point in time, you know, how did our students do? It's certainly not defining, but it is a good measure that we have. And we have multiple measures throughout the year, but this is one that we certainly spend some time analyzing, looking at, and trying to find how we're doing in terms of effectiveness. And I'm really proud and excited to report that we had a lot of growth. There's so much data you can dig into. I'm just going to hit two of the bigger reports that we have here within the STAR ecosystem. And so first I would say is our students meeting, percentage of students meeting proficiency. This was the first year that our ninth graders have taken the STAR. Take that back. These ninth graders have taken STARS for many, 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 many years. It's the first time really that our high school's teachers administer the STAR. So this was not new for our freshmen, they've been taking STAR for quite some time. And there you can see that 71% of our students hit proficiency when they gave the assessment reading in ninth grade. Conversely, 84% of our freshmen hit proficiency. And so again, that's a really high benchmark that we're really proud of, of our teachers and our students. And you can see the numbers going down the road there. I'll just kind of start with reading. Highlands Middle School, we're at 72% of our students, Johnson 90, 88, and 88 for our three elementaries, and then math, 79, 92, 88, and 91% of our students met proficiency as deemed by STAR when they set their benchmark as what proficiency was. So again, really proud of our students and our teachers for demonstrating and showing that growth over time and hitting that benchmark on that one time.
And Mr. Faust, it's have alignment, slide, projection toward KSA proficiency, ever at least giving us kind of a ballpark?
Yeah, you know, I think we need to study, we need to kind of keep this data over time. Our principals went back and said, all right, what was the correlation of accuracy on this? And I think we saw everything from really tight accuracy in terms of percentage to about eight to nine to 10 discrepancy. So I can't, I wouldn't sit here and say that this is where we're going to be, you know, come next fall. But I think over time, we'll look and see how accurate these numbers are. But it's not so egregious that it's like 20, 30 points off. It's within a, I would say about a 12-point window.
Well, it is high numbered, I mean, high 80s, 90s, that's impressive.
Yeah. If anything, I think this just validates what our teachers see in the classroom every day, right? And so I don't necessarily know that we hang our hat on this solely and say like, this is what it is. I think if anything, it's just a validation of what we've been doing and what we see every day. I'll say the next report that I would like to talk about, I'd say as a leadership team, we've really dug into this and made some decision rules that I'm pretty proud of. This is a student growth report. And so this is the degree that we can say that a student has made typical and/or has demonstrated at or above typical growth in a year's time. And we're trying to determine the percentage of students who have met that. And so STAR sets that number at 35. And so, for example, if you're looking here, you would say, I'm just going to Highlands High School, grade nine, according to this graphic in the blue there, it would read that 67% of students, 67% of our Highlands ninth graders were at or above typical growth this year, which is great. In math, 70% of our students met at or typical growth. Now, this is really a challenging number to hit, because you have to figure, we're really looking at each individual kid. We could have a student that's having tremendously high proficiency, but we didn't grow that student. So this really gets to where are the teachers working with our students on an individual basis? And so you could have a student that may be really struggling a grade level or two below, they may show tremendous growth. So they may not be at proficiency, but they show great growth, and that's really what we're looking for. I, you know, back to my principal days, we'd think about growth and/or proficiency, and so it's really that growth component that I think is really critical and vital. And if we can get our building leaders and our building teachers to really embrace and understand this concept, I think we're going a long way in our building leadership, really kind of embrace that this year, like I said, with these decision rules. I think we're going a long way in our building leadership, really kind of embraced that this year, like I said, with these decision rules. I would like to just kind of point out a highlight, or a couple of highlights here. Highlands Middle School, I'd like to direct your attention to that, that math number. Where you could see they almost have from 59% to 67% making typical growth. That's really, really proud of the work of our students there. Highlight Moyer Elementary there, on their math, they went from 58% of their students demonstrating year's worth of growth all the way up to 74% of their students making growth. Woodville in the area of reading, 69% to 74. I mean, there's accolades all around. You know, Johnson had a 6.0% growth. So I really think you can see the intentionality that our building levels had, whether it be with staffing, whether it just be looking at the data, having discussions in PLCs. I think you see the trend here is really positive and I'm proud of our teachers and our students and, and leadership for really digging in and figuring out how can we make these substantial gains. So, great work.
The only other thing, fantastic presentation, but I want to emphasize the point that this is comparing students to themselves and students who started like them. So, so if you were a high-performing student, it wasn't okay just to stay a high-performing student. You had to grow as compared to other high-performing students. So if, if we say that 80% SGP is a, is a stretch goal, it is a stretch goal. And, and we're very much approaching it. To see eight, nine percent increases in a single year is, is extraordinary. A two or three percent growth in, in a single year would, would be really good. And, and there will become a point where we get into maintenance. We haven't arrived there yet, but that, this, these are very impressive scores.
And I, I mean, when you look at what state, you know, part of the state formula now, like figuring in growth. We've always been high achieving, right, students achieving at a high level. But you talked about PLCs and professional learning and things like that. That is how we help support teachers to, to move those numbers in terms of a student being better off at the end of the year because of their instruction and what's happened in the classroom. So I, growth is always my, like, favorite number to look at. And that's, it's awesome.
I want to give kudos to the middle school.
Yeah.
Really do. Because, you know, we look at middle school scores, you know, year after year where they, they remain and, you know, they start out high and they kind of stay the same, you know, high scores. But, I mean, those are some great, great growth. So I know that they've been after it and paying attention to it. So, good job at the middle school. Well, good job, good job everywhere, but I wanted to give them an extra pat on their back. All right. Okay, board committees, have any updates?
Oh, I did find the, the Hall of Fame, yes. The class, you want me to get to them real quick?
Yeah.
Terry Brown, Rich Bailey, Ross Melner, Stephanie Redburger, Bill Roller, Kerry Grim Schwabach, Sean Sester, Gary Simon, Randy Stagman, and Mark Wendell. And the team of distinction is the 82 football team.
So this is the, the new athletic Hall of Fame class that will be inducted. And as far as dates on that, they will be recognized at the blue and white scrimmage on August 16th. And then the actual ceremony will be at the country club on the 17th. So great to see, we've got people from classes in the 70s and the 90s. You know, in the early aughts, some of us taught some of these students. So super good representation. So that's the Hall of Fame update.
Okay, and then we had updates from salary and budget committees, we did that. And, and the breakfast committee has one more treat to do before the end of the year. I know, I know. I'll be, be running after them. All right, any others? Okay, then the last thing is the consent agenda. And I need a motion, with all the board members having had the opportunity to review and pursue any questions about all of the items contained therein, I need a motion for the approval of the consent agenda. I'll make a motion. Second? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
There's a lot in there. Okay, do you have any other business? Okay, this is the end of this part of the meeting. We're going to go into executive session. So while I won't adjourn, you are free to go. We will be here later. Thanks for coming.
Do you need a motion to go into executive session?
Do I?
Yeah.
All right, I need a motion to go into executive session.
I'll make a motion.
Second, okay, all those in favor?
Aye.